We will call the regular school board meeting to order, six thirty-two. First order of business, educational focus. Mr. Philian?
No, we won't forget this, don't you worry.
So you're going to be presenting?
So you'll be presenting. Okay, great.
Thank you.
You're on.
Thank you. I'll show you where the deck is set up.
I'm sure you're going to be able to take it. Okay?
Yes.
We'll get your table.
I've got a drawing here. I've got to put a couple of settings up and find out.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Set something up there for you.
Sure.
These go on the substantial complete. They say a little TLC.
Okay.
And, you know, whatever you want us to need for any kind of comments, any kind of suggestions or anything else, we'll try to address that.
Okay.
Anything to comment on. We're just about at the finish.
Does it make sense for us to come over there and?
If you want to sit on a table, we'll do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think I.
I'm not sure if I'm fully in one of it. I'm not sure if I'm fully in it. I guess they can turn things.
And four of those here.
Yeah, exactly.
See what we're talking about here. Freaking jerk. Looks like a fire pit.
Let me start with the goal of the project. The first goal of the project is there's an underground oil tank right now that has some problems with this thing, and the oil tank has to be removed. So that's the first part of the project. So as part of this project right now, we're going to replace that old tank with two above-ground tanks, two small tanks. The next part of the program then the program of two, be able to use dual fuel capability. So as you see here, there's a side door in that, if we can have the other. We're going to put a tank farm out with that and park them on. So that you think your school committee capability of basically going through and beginning the area to determine which best interests for fuel, oil at a certain price, or propane tank at a certain price. And we've got these tank sized, both is the handle of, in the worst case, been with about a month of energy use. It's two six-hundred-and-sixty-gallon tanks and the four propane tanks in the back. What we try to do is maybe use a simple fire for example. We don't have a vaporizer on the air. So we'll be bringing a tank from underground piping into place, into here.
Those are propane?
Those are propane tanks. And we locate them with marks. We originally have over here with the sign, lock, gas, and push respect over here and here. So we basically just barely clear the woods. And we've got a design with a chain of fence, with bollocks, detection on fire. So it's a good, solid, durable installation. The specification for the fence will have slats on it, so you just can't see easily, protected out of sight, out of mind. That's what we're trying to do with the design on it. So coming from all that we're here. Now, the issue we have here next is where we're going to put the tanks. There's no place to put them in the building here at all. There's no room for them. So what we came up with here is a shed that's going to go right back and here with the oil tanks in there. Aboveground here, concrete pad for floor down, put the tanks on top of that. Then I'll give you two tanks that they fill for the yellow side, two six-hundred-and-sixty-gallon tanks. The reason why they're outside, but that's a massive size tank. If you put it through inside, you can't double. That's best for you to. Anything larger that would happen underground, and I told you, you don't want to be bothering the undergrounds and all tank here. One and done, so to speak. So that's the fuel loss that system set up there. The next portion of it is to replace it, or the boiler plant. Boiler plant, let me try to find those lines in here. Boiler plant right now is inefficient, and it's only oil. We're going to replace these here with two dual-fuel gas boilers. The burn is really do either way. Switch it back or forth from propane to oil back and forth, the vacation one on it. We're also going to re-pipe just the boiler room. Everything else in the distribution of the entire school is in good shape. We're going to leave all that pipe again. We're going to re-pipe the boiler room to try to accommodate the boilers. The other thing that are two here is we're going to change the pumps on it. Right now, the pumps they just run same speed all the time, no matter what happens. Bypasses around. So we're going to use pumps that build speed technology. So when time of year, it's intermediate, like they say, to about, you know, thirty degrees, you're probably at fifty percent capacity. When it's about zero degrees less, you'll be a hundred percent. And when you're up in the yellow time, the timeframe about the forties, you'll be, you know, ten percent. So it gives you that capability of really good control throughout the building. So that's the second part of the project, okay? The next part of the project that we're going to be doing here is, there's a couple of air conditioning systems that are outdated and need to be replaced. And the tool we're doing right now here is the entire office area, HPA system for the vehicle units, and it also works for the mechanical part, but they have to be used more here. Those are two areas that are on heating and air conditioning. So we'll change both units and offices here. So what it serves this space to heat only, the rest is in pretty good shape. Some of these air conditioning units, they put in the fall more, kind of more residential model, so to speak. So we're going to upgrade to more commercial mode here so that the lifespan of these units over here will act the lifespan of the entire plant. Then the last part of the project there, it's the most advanced part of the project, there's a pneumatic control system we're going to go with. Look, this air goes everywhere. The tango, the fresh, the air compressor's on, and the music room, it'll blow it up. You can hear the air compressor kind of on and off line. We're going to change that to a DDC system. So all the pneumatic tools we will take will be disconnected here. We'll run either wire or wireless systems, the controls on its base here. And then they'll give the upgrade here the full capability of setting temperatures throughout the building. If they class them seventy-two, they get seventy-two. Office areas, you want sixty-eight, they get sixty-eight. Another way we want something else that, the vestibules, for example, you want a low amount of fifty-five, you really need it, you can set them at fifty-five. Space like this for your meetings here. What we were doing in this case here, we put a thermostat on the wall. When you came in here, there'd be a simple button on it. That simple button would just take that from you. Let's see, fifty-five degrees set back, right to sixty-eight to seventy degrees, for the duration of your meetings. Okay? We will progress for however long you want. Two hours would really, or four hours in a case making one. And we're going to go through the entire plant, get the classroom, univentilators, cabin, unit heaters, all these other areas.
Will they be programmable at that? That's our.
No. They'll be adjustable at the front end, the mops will be used right now. And we can work with the school committee how we want that set for that program to come. How we want the graphics done, how it gets changed on it. If that, if you need access to somebody else aside box, we can set that with somebody else if you need it. It's multiple use on it. It's not just a one and done area. It's a web-based system. So somebody from your office, your office want to change the temperature, that's relatively simple. Perhaps we put it up on the same computer, not do a computer, same one.
Do you want to walk up?
No, the only thing you can walk up and change classes is if it's late in the afternoon and you need to unoccupy, occupy, that's the only thing that can change. If you don't want that, we can take that out too, okay? That's only a program of change. But everything else in the school is predetermined, preset. If a teacher wants to raise the temperature or temperature, they talk to Mark, they talk to administrator, then administrator does.
It's not like that.
It takes out. So a lot of the unit that's staying is going to be changed over to electronic control?
Yes. We're going to do three things with the units, okay? Right now, they have two damper motors on it. They will take those damper motors off, put pneumatic dampers in. I'm sorry, yeah, pneumatic dampers, okay, that's fine. And then we'll also cut a valve and also, okay, the water side. Right now, the way these unit heaters work, they think they have phase and bypass. You rip the water wall, that water was back and forth. And that, change that valve allows, use that valve above thirty-two degrees, above twenty-five degrees, to use the valve. And then below that, we use the phase and bypass. So that goes down to pump, okay? Outside, we can make, say, more electric energy on the pump setup part. So we're going to go through, tie it, build it, all the ventral radiation, that'll be changed. These units up in here, we'll be changing those controls off on. We're going to put gas into the system. We're going to put a couple of carbon monoxide detectors in, one in the plant, and one in the music room also. Because they're kind of adjacent. So not required cold-wise, but there's figures on that, it's still, they're not setting their alarm off. We've worked with the fire alarm company, we've worked with the security company, we will pick those points up. And they'll go to the police station or the fire station on it. They will not shut down the units. We just shut down our alarm. You only have to shut down units when you sleep in corners, do that damage to the, over here. That's not the change.
So the exhaust fans are going to be turned over to electronic control too, or?
Yes. They will try. The exhaust fan, what we're going to do with those, the bathroom exhaust fans will run on, out of time clock, you know, operational hours. And then in the classroom, those are side. It's a couple more exhaust fans. And what they're going to be set up for is, they're going to be set up for any time the outside, you have to build a maximum for ventilation mode. So it says open the windows, you can use the univentilator that kind of brings some fresh air in. When you do that, you kind of overpressurize the space, we'll bring the exhaust fan back on. So the exhaust fan will work, you can have a page on the computer screen, exhaust fan, on, off, time, weekends, Saturdays, within the case when you want it.
Yeah, but right now, they run pretty much all the time during the day.
Yes, that's right. The only ones that happen will be the bathrooms. We can shut them off at night right now. I think a couple of it, they're trying to use a time clock to go on it. But the time clock is, you know, in a few years, the little one that does what needs to be going on it. So the folks come in here with a bit from the chemical department, to do the whole amount of work over here, okay? So they'll be hiding, they'll be thinking of the demo for the tanks, or the tank bomb system here. They'll be thinking of the fuel tanks here, the boilers, all these other things. And what we're hoping to do is set up a timeframe so that it starts a little before school length. So we're not trying to make this rush between June, pick your date, and September first. So we want to try and get some good pricing response. We want to be able to open up some of the work, not the school areas, okay, not those areas, but outside coming in here. And we think the rest of the school area, the work in here, can be easily done over summer time. The current path, so to speak, is all that work out there. And if we need a little more time too, with about, according to Mark, about June first, he shuts the boilers down anyway. No need for really heat here. So we can give a little more time in the boiler if that's needed. It's outside access to it, you know. Content won't be coming into the building. All the facilities will be outside. So that's the, and kind of a nutshell, that's.
They have to have hot water in here for school.
Hot water is what it's on the boiler.
No, the hot water heater right now works off an electric water heater. What we're going to do is we're going to change that electric water heater to a gas hot water heater. And the reason why they changed to a gas hot water heater is, if you have, when you have the two dual fuels out there, okay, and you put this in sometime or another, the fuel oil tanks will wait, maybe wait for a couple of years. You just can't have the propane tank interacting, you know, for a long period. You've got to have some kind of flow to the tanker. When you need it, it won't be there. So the strategy is to use a water heater, please draw some propane out of that tanks. So when the time comes to switch over, there's gas running through it, there's no problem. The regulators have worked on it a lot, to change the pressures on it. It's a substantive upgrade, okay? Not needed, okay, but I just think it's a safety motor, or way to minimize the risk of potential problems down the road. And that doesn't happen, you know, as they happen at school time with the temp lines.
There's no electric hot water heater in there except for emergency right now. I mean, it is run on demand, but, not on demand, but it heats the, it's got a hot water coil in there. So you will just, if you want to shut it off in June, you probably have to use the backup one.
Okay. I, we're going with Mark on some of these things over here. And you're right, we were using them. The one way they're playing to be placed is the one with the mixing valve. That's the one we're looking for. In the middle of the mixing valve, a little short one like this here.
Yeah.
That was, I believe, is where I chased the pipes down through. That was dedicated to the restrooms. That's the only change. Any other questions we can handle here? Any other timing questions? Any else? Any, I hope we nailed the scope, so to speak, what we're looking for.
Yeah, and all the overfill protection and all that, that's all into the plan. I thought, yeah, the overfill, the above-ground tank.
It's all coming up.
Yeah, but you have the above-ground tank. It's got to be, if there's a leak or an overfill.
The container.
Yeah, that's all.
On each one, on each one, we'll have a containment facility in it, so it won't be going all over the place. All right. We have that. And we have an alarm on it that picks up on it, that someone will notice something's happened. So we don't have quite as sophisticated leak detection system as you have now on it. And that's involved because in the ground tank, it's a pump system. Our goal is to put the above grounds, everything's grabbed and taken. So we'll look at this stuff.
Yeah.
Make sure.
That's basic.
And we'll have a small electric heater in the room also. So we don't have to go to mixture of fuel and kerosene and some oil on this here. So that's always a problem sometimes when it gets really, it's really cold. So we'll have that small heater. And we'll keep it at a middle temperature of forty-five, fifty degrees. So we don't have to go anything elaborate, anything elaborate on the building structure itself.
So the building will be insulated? So it'll be obviously heated, insulated?
The building shed is going to be, it's going to be insulated at forty-five degrees. You don't get any bad if you bucket at forty-five degrees with that type of shed, insulated stuff like that. And you do when you get up to higher temperatures, or forty-five. What we're trying to do is try to use a typical shed system over here, but that is easy and maintain, slide on grates, we don't have to build a floor on it, and just basically shell building on it. So that's our goal. We can insulate, that's a requirement on it, but I just don't see a need for it right now. The middle of the time, I have a little temperature in the right place. If needs be picked up, then we'll add it to the sculpt. That's the only issue.
Do they have gas ovens and stoves in the?
Don't they have gas?
And in the science rooms?
Nope, not anymore. Nope. And not in the home bedroom, just in the kitchen.
They have the one separate?
Tanks.
Yeah.
What's the expected lifespan of the system?
Twenty-five years.
I think one of the reasons the shed came in was just the visual of not seeing two tanks outside.
Sure.
Yeah, that was the main thing on it. And also, it was getting, because there's six-hundred-and-sixty-gallon tanks, it was really getting difficult to get covers or closures on. Those tanks are, those are closure relief from a smaller tank system. And also did it give us that protection from the cold. So we tried to look at the overall picture of it, and we're trying to combine it with a, a simple, a kind of a small, simple practice.
And we had gotten some numbers a while back when we first asked for the study. And there was some pretty significant economies that we were able to generate just by upgrading to more efficient systems. Do you have a sense of like, you know, it's going to be a pretty significant outweigh of what the sense of like a payback will be with respect to savings that will realize in more efficient boiler?
I don't have before. I haven't discussed with Wayne the ability to calculate that all. But I don't want to give you a number or anything.
That's fine, that's fine. You don't have.
But if you look on the side of it, Wayne will help with all the number.
That would be good. I mean, the, it's just information that I think is going to be helpful, because we're going to be asking the town to, you know.
Help soldiers.
To sell.
Write this sign on for it, and it'd be nice for them to know what they're selling.
Yeah, I get.
And I think the numbers were pretty favorable when we initially discussed it, because in my reflection, I just don't know.
There's two numbers. They're accurate. One is you're going to say the efficiency of change in the air conditioning. We go from a unit that was a standard seat back in nineteen ninety, was probably neighborhood nine, and now a standard seat about fourteen or fifty. So right then, it's a delta between those two. But that's small compared to that part, okay? There's a delta that's hard to calculate on the board of it, because fuel's fuel. And the only difference between the two of them is whether or not they're using oil or gas. And that's market based. So that could be anything. It's some periods in time that can be high, sometimes periods that can be low. So that's, that's not an accurate way to calculate that. Where we want to get the biggest benefit about the savings over here is a change from the pneumatic system to the DDC system. Not too significant savings to come back. It gives you the ability to change these temperatures all the night, logroom change, including the bathroom. Those are numbers you have to look at.
Yeah. And is there, is there like a part of the project is helping us get that set up to, to be more efficient?
Yeah. I guess, I guess my point is that I don't want to skew the decision by saying we have all the savings here. But unfortunately, it's going to be offset by this boiler plant cost here to kind of knock it down here. And the reason why we're doing it at this workplace is because we've got to take this old tank out of the market. So should you include some of your absolute half of them into a savings account? My opinion is not, okay? So if we can try and break it into separate numbers here, to spend X amount of dollars, whatever it is, for a DDC package, okay, there's a payback on that. I think we can turn it out. There's a payback on the equipment change, we can take care of that. But I'd like to be able to discuss it at the time. And there's also something to do with boiler plants though, okay? You go from, again, depending on the gas you are versus oil. The gas can maybe go up to ninety percent, about all the way five, five degrees. There's a little number on that also. All the infrastructure itself is kind of, kind of makes a good number, but we'll talk about that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I guess, whatever, whatever your best estimates or whatever you want to come up with, that could definitely be helpful for us.
Sure.
The variable speed pumps, is that what it was?
Yes.
Is that part of?
It's probably controls, nothing else.
Is that part of savings?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. That's part of the change in everything from pneumatic to electric, because we're changing all, we're changing all the valves that are now this true position or phase and bypass, we're changing the valves. And that's, I would put that number into that, rather than into the boiler. That's all for a second. Thank you, that's a good point.
So the only air we're going to have in this building afterwards is just sprinkler? That is sprinkler system?
Oh, yes. The compressors will be working for, we're not.
That's just a little.
Yeah. The only thing we're doing with sprinklers at the right now is local fire, pilot, exop, all the lot. We'd like us to add a dry sprinkler head to the shed. So we'll add one to that. That's his protection on it. He'll feel more comfortable with it on, because the fuel's up. Absolutely, we'll do it. We'll make that kind of number. It's on the drawings now.
So the hot water, domestic hot water basically isn't going to change, it's just going to go through the boilers?
It's going to go to a new water heater. That's all it's going to do. Just so we can draw some fuel out of the tank. That's all. Nothing else.
There are health problems.
Anything else?
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
We probably won't get a set of those prints until after it's installed.
I mean, I would say we'll get them when they go out to bid, right?
Oh, yeah, probably. Yeah, we wouldn't be able to see them until that happens. Because it can't be leaked though.
Which is going to be soon, just if we've got to get it. Okay, yeah.
Use a better way to wrap my head around it.
Yeah, so you can come into the office and look at it, if you want to see if we can get a set of prints, okay?
Next item of business is the approval of the minutes from November thirteen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm going to commotion for approval.
A second.
Do you have a second? Thank you, Vance.
I have one thing.
Jamie?
In number one, let's see, one, two, three, four, five lines down. Can we add the word new? There is no new event system necessary? As one already exists? Because there is a necessary system, just not a new one.
Okay. And that was part of the discussion, right?
Correct. Yeah. That's all I had.
Any other discussion? No? All in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close? Obstain?
Obstain.
Jasmine abstained. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Correspondence? Maybe we should wait for Judy to get back for that one. Anyone from the board, I don't, I did not. I didn't get anything from Matt suggesting that he did either. I don't know, next two items rely on the people that are up in the hall. So.
You can go on the, probably his report.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Principal's report?
You want to do that?
Sure.
All right. So the scheduled ALICE training that we have went off on Thanksgiving, and we had a debrief today with the police chief, Lincoln, Chief Morris, and then Chief of Police from Franconia, who really is a person who does a lot of the ALICE training and stuff. And, you know, he gave us a lot of praise, gave the kids a lot of praise in terms of all the positive stuff that was happening there. He showed, they showed their appreciation for forward thinking, might be able to do a drill like that. And we had some questions, a lot of hypothetical questions that tend to take place in things like this. But knowing that the kids have already run through some sort of simulation, the police chief said, you know, it's good to have that at least playing in the back of their mind, whether it's, you know, and not to have that, not to have something just sudden sprung on them. So I'd like to thank Mr. Jesse Singh. He's the owner of the KS Market. He donated five hundred dollars to the schools of science programs just recently. Came in, we had a nice talk. We talked about the new science lab that was installed. So got a chance to discuss things with him, and he was very generous. Also, just recently, we, yesterday as a matter of fact, the LWEA hosted a craft fair for the elementary students, which was a great turnout, you know, both with student helpers and teachers, and then actually the participants of the elementary school. It was a really good job. They had the school band playing and everything. So that was something I'd never seen before. So it was really nice to have, very festive. Then obviously, you know, the winter sports are kicking off this week, the official games, you know, basketball season for middle school games. Middle school games tomorrow. Basketball has Friday, first away games at Littleton, and then next week, the ski team starts. And then we're also raffling off the PTA. You might have seen some of the holiday baskets up the hallway, and they'll be raffling that off tomorrow. You know, they have some really nice creative themes. I'd encourage you to look at some of the themes when they're out there. And I'm going to win one. No, I'm just kidding. Who knows? Also, we like to look at, you know, as far as testing goes to where kids are. What we do is we belong, or we purchased that NWEA program, so we're going to start looking at that again in January. Also, if you're not familiar, that New Hampshire, the SAS system, which is the state assessments, testing stuff, has like modular assessments available for anybody that does like kid, grades three through eight. And so those modular testings allow us to take a look at, let's say, we're doing something with earth science in the eighth grade. We can take a little snidbit of that and test the kids to figure out, you know, where they lie in that. It gives them exposure to the test itself. And then it offers us some almost instantaneous feedback in terms of what the kids know. So that works with ELA in math and science. So they're going to be starting to do that over the next couple of weeks and hopefully prior to the testing season in May. It's really beneficial. We've used that in the past in other places that have worked. And, you know, just having that opportunity for kids to explore a test prior to actually taking that test and then, and then looking at the feedback. Because typically, when we do those state tests, the kids don't get to see, to see like the results of a test or how to work for a problem on that test. They just get to see, hey, here's your score, and that's about it. Where this will give teachers an opportunity to really dig deep into how to approach the test, the content of the test, and then, you know, maybe to set up some small group situations for them to be able to remediate kids. So I'm looking forward to that, and our teachers are starting to do that just now. So that's pretty much all I got.
Quick question about the test. Are they using them as like graded assessments in the classes, or is it just sort of a practice?
The benefit of those things are that you can use them, and you can assign them as a, as a pre-test, a post-test, no reason. Or you can, and you can take them a multitude of times. So some of them might be using it as a summit if they feel like that, you know, that's the case. But some of them might be using it as a pre-test as well. So it's their choice.
You mentioned basketball starting. Do we do a winter pep rally, or is that just a?
Ah, yeah.
Oh, we do.
We are. This might be new to the teachers. They've been talking about that. It just got to me. So it's like the winter pep rally is going to be Tuesday.
Okay.
At two o'clock.
Okay.
That's last word I had. So we'll be doing that. And that's where they're going to be giving out their, is this a secret or not? Is that a secret or not?
Not anymore, Mark.
Sorry. They're going to be giving out those varsity jackets that the kids earn as well.
Great.
So that'll be Tuesday.
Was it a secret?
No.
Was it a secret? No, it's not anymore. It's unrecorded.
Strike that. Motion to strike.
So we skipped over a couple of things while you were in the hall, but correspondence? Okay. And so business, business initiative?
Yeah, okay. A couple of things. First of all, the accounts table is going around here for this week. Also, any blue folders, I put the school board payment form in there that we just need back because we tried to run it the next payroll, the payments for the school board.
Should we just put it back in there?
Yeah, that's fine.
Or just hand it directly?
Yeah, either way. And also in your folder, I put a financial recap of the year to date. And we can go over that, or we can go over it next week if the budget really doesn't matter. But just try to get a snapshot of where we are. So we're six months into the fiscal year, but three months into the school year. The school year is the bulk year is the bulk of your spending.
Okay.
So I, I, I set it up by the major budget lines that we report to the state. Um, and you'll see that in your, when we're going through the budget, you know, the regular education, special, special programs, vocational ed, all that. And it just show the budget, our actual spend, expenditures to date, and then a percentage of where we are for those expenditures to date. And then the encumbrances, because again, we're only, again, three months into the school year, six months into the fiscal year, but most of your spending is done during the school year. And then budget left to date. I mean, that's, for payroll, we, we try to encumber the payroll. Once we set up the payroll, it encumbered to, encumbers the salaries and benefits unless there's any changes, um, then they get re-adjusted. So again, it's just, it gives us a, a good field, well, to see if there's anything that's out of whack, if we, if we can see, you know, we've had some changes on, on some of the, like nursing, just how we are getting that service. Our busing has changed a little bit. We have some special ed costs that we didn't necessarily budget for, you know, so it just kind of gives us a, a snapshot in time of our actual spending. So, you know, we're halfway through the fiscal year, um, three months added, you know, nine or months or so for the school year. So we're, and we've spent 40% of our budget. So we're, we're where we should be at. If you have any specific questions, we can dig through those. And that is all I have.
Any questions, Amy?
Yes. Yeah. We had discussed before about maybe, uh, being able to put this money towards something, that's something we should discuss.
Yeah, you can discuss that with me.
Just come over and discuss it?
Yeah.
Cause I'm not going to take.
Yeah. We have that form.
So I can just sign off on not taking the money. All right, we'll be good.
Okay. So is that, I'm sorry, Joe.
No, that's it. That's it. Yeah.
Uh, superintendent's report.
Okay. So we, um, there will be a, um, budget committee meeting on Thursday, the 12th. And that's to review the schedule and get everything set up. And then, you know, we'll move forward from, from the budget committee with that, if anyone wants.
Wait, tomorrow night?
For the budget committee.
Just the budget committee.
Our regular budget session is next week.
Oh, okay.
So the budget workshop session is next week for the board. Uh, and we'll just continue, um, where we are as far as the budget goes.
So when did you say that meeting was?
The budget workshop for the board.
No, the budget committee.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night.
Joe, are you going to be on?
At what time?
Six, 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 six o'clock.
John's going to load a reply.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a few, um, items, agenda items that will be, um,
Hey, Matt.
Need some action. And you have the Kinsman Scholarship press on, but that's coming up on the agenda. Um, and, uh, the district clerk appointment, uh, that is, that's on the agenda as well. And, um, we did have another meeting with, the administrative team did have another meeting with Mark Dolan, uh, with the strategic plan. Mark Dolan's your, um, rep from the Union of Superior Association. Uh, and the, the committee, well, we just finished up on our, uh, portion of it. And now what we will do is send out notices next week, um, for committee, um, notices so that we can get some stakeholder groups and, and get some people on the.
So I was going to be on it for the school board. Have we had any of those meetings yet?
No, 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 no. There's three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's one of them.
But no, we haven't had anything.
Oh, Tammy.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's what we had on.
We're not at that.
You're on it. So the next time we have a meeting, now you guys are the university.
Okay.
So we're just getting all the other stakeholders together. And, um, the other thing I wanted to do is go over the, as a, as a, you know, in, uh, segue into what Mark was talking about. I don't know. And, uh, and it is going over the data for the state tests that the students took. Now you have three different, um, sets of acronyms here. One is your New Hampshire SBAC. The next one is New Hampshire SAS and then AP and SAT. Okay, those are your acronyms. Um, the, the first one is your, it, it means the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. That's a New Hampshire Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. And that was what was previously in place for the state testing. That's what it was called. The next one is the New Hampshire School Assessment System. That's what's in place now. Almost the same, same type of setup. You know, that was almost the same. The major change was when we used to do the New Hampshire kneecap, the kneecap assessments and the, um, the BASC assessments. There, you know, those were different. But now the, these, those two, the, uh, New Hampshire SBAC is the same as what we're doing now. So it's not that much of a difference. Your AP is your advanced placement and your SAT or your Scholastic Aptitude Test. The SAP is a grade 11 state assessment. So the state assessment, the, the New Hampshire SAS, SAS, goes from grades three to eight. So you'll see scores three to eight. And then you will see, uh, scores of the advanced placement. Not every student takes them. Students can choose to take them and they don't have to take them. And then the, um, Scholastic Aptitude Test is the SAT scores of this college boards in, in, um, their finance through the state. Okay. So on the first one, if you want to look at the, the cohorts, so for example, on the first page, if you, this is the, um, the state testing. From 1617, we used the, the SBAC, S-B-A-C, okay? So there you have grade three in a gold color. If you go to 1718, that's the same group when they were in grade four. And then if you go to 1819, that's the same group when they were in grade five. And so forth, when you go down. Okay. So you have your greens next, your purples, and your golds again.
The percentage is your proficiency, proficiency level?
I'm sorry?
The percentage on there is the proficiency level?
Yes, that's a proficiency level. Yes.
Thank you.
The, the number itself is the number of students.
Mm-hmm.
And the percentage is the percentage of students who, who made proficiency level. So that would be, is four component areas. You have one, two, three, and four. One being the lowest area of scores and four being highest. Three and four are the groups of students who made proficiency level. The first one is in math and your second one is in reading. Same setup.
When is this test taken?
I'm sorry?
When is the test taken? Is it the beginning of the year?
In spring. Oh, no, it's in the spring.
At the end of the year?
Usually it's in, in May.
May?
I think it's March to May is when the window is open. I mean, March to May. At the bottom of these, you're seeing, at the bottom of these two pages, well, one you're seeing, 1617, you're seeing a grade 11 because in grade 11, in 1617, they still used the old state assessment. However, in 1718, the grade 11, we, we put, the state put in the, um, SAT scores. So you're not seeing any, oh, no, we just didn't get it for that one. We didn't have it.
Yeah, for some reason we didn't have it for that one. And there was still the opportunity to do it for grade 11.
Okay. Is that 1819?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
That's the reading. Science is taken separately. So you have reading, math. Reading and writing is, is one assessment. Math is another assessment and science is another assessment. And science is taken in grades five, eight, and 11. So you don't get science every year. You don't get it three through eight. You just get the grade five, eight, and 11. In 1617, we only have the proficiency, the number, uh, the level of proficiency. In 1718, at grade five, there were 30 students that took it, 23%. And in 201819, it was 23 students and 26%. Some of these don't have cohorts, obviously, because they're spread out, the grades are spread out. Okay. So now we're talking about the, uh, the school assessment system. And ELA is English Language Arts. So that's your reading and writing. Okay. So these are comparison scores, uh, with the state. So it guides you as to where the rest of the state is compared to where we are. In some cases where, you know, we're within range, remember it's a range because this is a one in a moment testing. So you have, you have to allow for, um, if it was a good day or a bad day type of thing with the student. So you, you, the, you know, the first one is they're within a range, the 48, um, for the grade three reading and, and English Language Assessment. Um, and then the, the New Hampshire State one was 52. So that's within the range. And, and they're going, they could do go up and down. Some are inconsistent. And they, we look at the inconsistencies. Okay. We'll, we'll be digging deeper into the inconsistencies and, and the, uh, the spread of the scores.
It's kind of discouraging. It looks like we are below the state in everything except for, um, is it eighth grade math and eighth grade science?
Well, um, third grade reading. Some of them are in range.
In range, yes, but still below everything.
Some of them are dramatically below.
Yes.
Yes, some are significantly below.
Some are significant. I would say that there are significant differences.
There, and there's none that are significantly higher.
Yes, uh, 11th grade.
You're right. 11th grade science. You're right. Other than that, it's only one other that's higher and it's only by 1%. It's kind of discouraging to look at most of these.
So since these scores have come out, in the, in the meantime, we have changed our reading program and we have changed our math program. We've developed a science curriculum, next generation science curriculum, K through 12. And, um,
Good.
And we started a new science program.
Well, that's encouraging.
So we're moving, you know, we're moving forward seeing these scores.
Good. Good.
In, in the direction.
Would it be possible to see these same scores from last year?
These are from last year.
Two sets of scores in there.
Am I missing?
Um, are you talking about the ones that looked like this?
201819.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
The SAS?
No, we have 1819 is all we printed out. But, but, yeah, but yes, I can get, um, the year prior.
I'd just like to.
We do have that data.
Those would be.
It's difficult to look at one year, one year set is, could say one, it's a snapshot in time. So I'd like to see it maybe compared to others.
Yeah.
This is basically it, right? Because this is our year that we just got done taking. And if we look the previous cohort, that's going to tell you, but it's not going to give you a comparison to the state. I mean, I can get that for you, yes. If you, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah.
How do you compare with the state? But, but basically it's those scores the previous year.
But the, the different, there's different tests that are being given too, though. There's like, the SAS starts in grade, oh.
Three.
Grade.
Right. Three.
Three. I just went to a, a training on the, um, uh, what's called the I, um, the I platform. And it, it has to do with the smarter balance and stuff. The, the thing you need to know in terms of the SAS versus this SBAC is, is that it is, like Judy was saying, it's virtually the same platform.
Yeah.
The, the only thing they've taken out is a performance based assessment. But other than that, they figured that, you know, the state wanted to keep whatever was in there, the same questions, those kinds of things, that test bank, the same way they regulate it, the same way they, they determine the norms and those things. So it's virtually the same platform.
Okay. I just, I remember the last, last year we looked at a set of data, and it's one thing, one thing that stood out to me was that it was, it was different. It was presented differently. But there was, there, there seemed to be a lot of movement from students that were struggling one year to the next year that they were moving towards the middle. But there wasn't a lot of growth from kids that were on the fence or like right in the middle to the higher ends.
Yeah.
And I, and I remember that standing out to me, um, as a concern that, you know, maybe we were doing a really good job for, for kids that were struggling, but for those kids who, you know, were doing okay on their own, they weren't getting enough to be challenger enrichment. And they weren't growing at the same rate that the lower kids were growing, if you know what I mean. Um, and I don't know if that's what's trending out in this data too, because as Tammy said, I don't see, there seems to be decline, but not a lot of growth, you know, in certain spaces. And I'm not judging or anything like that.
Right, 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 right.
You know, I'm, I'm.
If, if you look at this page, did you look at this page yet?
Is that the last one?
Yeah.
Basically. This kind of talks a little bit about, about growth, okay, about what that average growth percentile is compared, or not compared to the state, but, but what we are within that 99, one to 99.
Yeah.
But, but when you look at that average growth, it can only measure from the last two years. So it's looking at that, you know, the last two years that people have taken it. That's why you don't see grade three on here, even though they took the test, because they have nothing to compare it to. So if you're looking at ELA grade four, you know, 46% of our kids are showing that growth. Now, does it take into account kids who are already a three and maybe it just kind of levitate or stayed at that three range?
Yeah.
Probably not. You know what I mean? So it's just looking at those that are, that have actually made growth.
When you, when you seek growth, I mean, when we say growth, no growth or growth, if, if a child is in third grade and he scored, has a score, and then the next year he goes to fourth grade and only he's proficient in third grade, and then he goes to fourth grade and he's proficient in fourth grade, they've made growth.
Right.
Because they had to make growth in order to stay proficient.
To stay proficient. Right. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Good point, good point.
A lot of that, you know, it's hard to, you know, say, how much, down, down to the, the, the students who are needing the support, you're going to see more of that because they're behind.
Right.
You know?
Is this every student averaged in grade?
Every student who has taken multiple tests. So you might have a student that didn't take the ELA test for some reason, but had to, but was okay taking the math test. So with that, you only have one set of date on that person. So you can't determine.
Gotcha. But every, now every student in each grade that is tested is required to take the test regardless of, uh, special education students versus AP students. They all take the same.
In extreme cases, there are different types of assess, state assessment for those students who need a different type of assessment.
But for the most part, it's all students. Okay.
Correct. And you also have by law, we have to have a local standardized assessment, which we have. So the local is, uh, within the, within the K through 12, but there are, they can look at that more often.
Gotcha.
And so they can look at, okay, how did these kids do in a, you know, September to December?
Gotcha. Yeah.
Change their curriculum or change their instruction.
Move things around, yeah.
This does once a year and it's for curriculum. So that's the big picture.
Right, right, right. Gotcha.
That was our NWEA testing that, you know, they're going to try, they're going to be doing again probably in January, some of the teachers.
Okay.
Sometimes we often, you know, when you look at like special education, for instance, we really want to determine where they are as much data as possible. Those kids are like automatically tested and they make sure they do those three types.
Right, right, right.
Other kids, not necessarily.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And then you get into the, um, the SATs.
Those are encouraging.
That's, that's, you know, probably self-explanatory because each of.
They get there eventually.
Yeah.
So their, their, um, component areas are right there. And you can see, you know, how many students took it, you know, and, and the number of, uh, if, the number of students who made their, their benchmarks and those who didn't.
Sure.
And the percentage. And that's both for the spring of 2018 and 19. That's for grade 11 only.
You know, I like what you said too. That's encouraging, you said, because, you know, it's a long road, education, right?
Sure. Yeah.
And so when you look at the kids that are doing our SATs, they've had a long time to, to refine their skills. And so when you look at those, you know, those are, oh, those are above the state.
Yeah, absolutely.
And national norms.
And even though elementary is, you know, elementary academics are elementary academics, but the, the changes that they've had, at least in my two girls' experiences, they're like, this math program is brand new. Even the teachers are learning it. So that makes a difference too, you know, that there has been changes and.
Makes a big difference.
Yeah.
I see, I think some of the challenges too with, with being such a small school is. I think some of the challenges too with, with being such a small school is that it's such a small group of kids.
Yeah.
So to look at them as a cohort, as a group
Right.
is challenging when, if you focused on individual growth of students and tracked that, which I'm sure you do
Right, absolutely.
that that might be a little bit more encouraging than, like, well, altogether, because there's going to be stronger classes than others, there's going to be kids that move in and out of our school, and, and, you know, are a little bit more transient, who come in and might be part of this cohort, but not, not here anymore, and that can work in both ways.
Yeah.
But a lot of times, they may throw it off in a way that doesn't, doesn't look so good.
Right.
Because if you have 10 kids in a class, or 15 kids
And two, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a couple that don't, that have a more difficult, more challenging time with it, that it can, so.
I got another question. How, how concerned are you, is the administration, about some of these numbers?
We're concerned with some of the numbers, though.
Okay. I mean, they, there's, some of them are dramatic.
Yeah.
I mean, we're 30 points, percentage points behind state average in some of these things, and I, and I understand that, like, that, there's some problems with the small samples, there's some, you know, that things can get skewed.
But the data, is it?
Yeah, but I mean, there's, you know, the fact that we have a 30% proficiency in fifth grade ELA, and the state average is almost, is 57%.
Right.
And we should be doing better, it seems like.
Absolutely.
Is that why we changed some of these programs?
Yes, that's why we brought in the, the next-generation science, had that brought in just two years ago. And then the pro, the science program was brought in two years ago, so we brought it in. So, you know, that takes everyone time to acclimate to the, the new program and the, so the teachers have been using it for two years. So the students who started in second grade, they're only in fourth grade now, you know, with their program and the curriculum.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, and
Is there
Some of them started later.
Is there national?
How are those kids tracking? How are those individual students that have had a couple of years in those programs? I mean, are you looking at that? I mean, are they tracking at a better rate?
Oh, we'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at it. Yeah, but that is one of the things we look at, you know, we look at, okay, when was the science program put in? When was the math program put in? Okay, what's the difference? We're seeing, seeing a big difference in the math program, you know, right now. Reading program was just implemented this year, so
Was there a pilot class for the reading program?
There was one, a pilot class last year. Those scores went up for the pilot class.
And which, what grade was the pilot class last year?
Uh, let me just think for a second. Uh, third grade.
So the third, so third grade in 2017-18 is fourth grade 2018-19, or sorry, actually. So we're in the second, we'd be in the second year. So we, we have to wait at least one more year to get a reasonable assessment of whether or not
And, and the pilot program is not the entire program.
It was a reasonable approval assessment.
Yeah, what's that?
The pilot program is not the entire year.
Okay.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, yeah.
It's a pilot, you know, get to use it for a semester.
So we won't know for
Right.
one or two years to, you know, whether or not those are going to make the improvements necessary?
Individually, we will not, you know, we'll be not
Right, right, right.
Looking at the kids, but
For the big picture, we'll take, yeah.
The, the NWVA will do a, a growth assessment chart for individuals. When you try to do it as a cohort, as a grade level, it's really, it's really cumbersome. And as a matter of fact, the program itself won't allow you to do that, you'd have to go in and do that all by hand. The reports generated are typically reports that are on the website that we have, within the program that we use. But if I wanted to look at growth overall in terms of a cohort, it, it only has that data for 2014. I don't know why it's not updated, but it won't allow you to even track anybody that's even in our buildings anymore.
And then you have the AP scores, this is five years. These are students who choose to, to take the assessment. They don't have to take the assessment. So these are, you know, you took, again, you have the total number of students, and, you know, for the years, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19.
Is there anything for us to compare that to? State, national averages or something? Because I, I mean, there's no way for us to
I think it's hard because
The AP scores? Yeah. You don't have to take
That is all the data that I was, that I received. I can, I can ask.
I'm just thinking, like, are, 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 are AP students that are taking the same AP exams that other students, are they as well-prepared for this, for the testing?
I don't know how many others are.
Right, right.
The Department of Education website has like a huge data bank that's really easy to sort and scrub. I mean, you can go in there and fool around and get a ton of stuff. Yep.
But the bottom gives you the percentage of students who scored three and above. And these are the mean, average scores. These are the average scores for your last five years in each of the subject areas. The, the areas that are blank that, that year, it was, that assessment was not, there were no students. Every year, not every year are these assessments given because of the size. I would suggest you look through this, now that you can read it, you know, somewhat, and then if you have any questions, call in.
Yeah, can we put it on for continuing business, maybe, next, next meeting?
Thank you.
Is that, I think there was one more thing that you wanted to talk about for, as part of superintendent's report.
Thank you.
It was the article that you wanted to hand out.
So, yes. Okay, this is the article that I found in, in one of the newspapers, and it, it just refers to the cellphone use, to something to read, it was an interesting article. Also, you have a newsletter from North Country Educational Services, that's our consortium for services
Yeah.
that we pull from. And there's a lot of trainings, free trainings are in there that, that staff here, professional staff have access, as well as your parent support group have access for training. Right now, they have a, currently, they have a training going on within the last couple of months, up until the new year in January, and that will be for the guidance councils throughout the North Country, so they'll be having Cassie Yackley, who is an expertise in trauma students, and so that's happening, as well as professional development for the parent group involving trauma students as well. We're doing, we're trying to zooming, we're zooming in using technology, so there is a classroom here, or an office here, one of the conference rooms that they use, and whoever is interested can go in there with a computer, and we have them set up so they can, it's, offered in dorm room, but they're getting it in Lincoln, so with the zoom in. Getting that, right, North Country does that. And that's it.
Does anyone have any questions for Judy? Committee reports, I think, I think we said something that the safety committee had met? Joe, did you say that?
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, we really, all we talked about was
Oh, right. He brought, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was wondering, Mike.
Access, we just went over access, trying to prevent.
Okay.
I really can't get too specific.
No, yeah, we don't want you to.
That's good.
Nothing, nothing that the board needs to be updated about.
Yep, great.
Okay.
I mean, we can go non-public, I guess.
No, I don't think we need to. So, any other committees?
Policy.
Policy, Matt, you have, any other besides policy? No?
Wellness, Matt. We talked about plans for, so the wellness committee met, we talked about, what did we talk about? We recapped something, what did we just get done doing? And then we talked about all of our plans for January.
Yeah.
So we have kind of like an event per week in January.
Salads and soups and this, that, too.
Yeah, a mindfulness week. You're welcome. Um, and, but I feel like we just recapped, what did we just finish? I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I think we were foc, there was like a focus of
Turn the table until next week.
When was the meeting?
Get the minutes.
When was the meeting?
The minutes will be the next
The minutes, okay, there you go, wait till the minutes come. There you go. Perfect.
It was really important.
It was a great meeting. Oh, yeah.
I can't wait.
No, but, but January sounds awesome, there's really
Lot of activities.
Lot of activities to get people involved, which I think is really important, especially during the winter when things are sluggish and dark. So, yeah.
Excellent.
I have one more thing.
Yes.
I do have a Medicaid-to-school fact sheet that the state came out with, just to give you a summary of what, what's going on.
Did you, I sent you an email this week, that there was a new executive order signed by the governor about this, and I was wondering if we thought that that was going to make any meaningful difference? No? No? Okay, great, fantastic.
Excellent.
It didn't sound like it, I read it, and it sounded like it was fluff.
It's the last page.
Okay.
It's just going to expedite the licensing, in other words.
Yeah.
And those who, who are eligible for a license will be able to get it quick, more quickly, so that we can get in compliance, so we'll have to see who can, you know, who's going to, but the, still going to be required.
Yeah. Did anyone have any questions about this, or any discussion? No? Policy committee met tonight, we went over some things that are going to be on for first reading next meeting, January 8. The two issues that are on for second reading this evening are the purchasing procedure and the school closing procedure. School closing procedure, if you remember, I think the policies are in the packets. School closing procedure, we were just adding the superintendent's designee as opposed to chairman of the board.
Very timely, because I took a lot of heat at my house last week, and we were supposed to get a big storm.
Yeah. Somebody had read the policy, found out that you were the trigger man.
That's right.
So, you know, I, I, does anyone have any suggestions, comments?
You do.
Yeah.
In the delayed opening, so this is upon determining that weather conditions appear, there's no other option there for delayed opening, which there may or may not be, there was, was it years and years ago, I think Christine was little, so it had to been, well, not that old, so it wasn't that long ago.
Well, even earlier in the year, sorry, we had the electrical
Right, yeah. There was a pole down or something one time, 100 years ago, that it was delayed for, but, and that was a delay, not a closure. So maybe something, and the next one we have on closings, this is weather or other conditions. So maybe add other
Circumstances.
Conditions, circumstances, something. And then I had another question about, what if school closed, is closed on a town meeting or a school district day? Because that has happened, then there wouldn't be any staff in the building, and you'd still need janitorial. We had a town meeting two years ago, was it? Three years ago?
Now we don't have school that day, it's an in-service day.
It's an in-service day, so it wouldn't matter.
Voting.
Now, in-service days, if the weather is horrible, would you still have an in-service day, or would you call that a snow day?
That wouldn't be considered a snow day, that would, that could be canceled for staff. Teachers, students wouldn't be, that's already in the calendar, so
But as far as getting access to the building, it's
Yeah, like, you'd have to have still a janitor, I mean, there's 100 people in the building, there still have to be staff there. I don't know if that should be addressed, or just taken as a given, or
Well, what, we usually communicate with the town.
Yeah.
I mean, in years past, that's what I've done.
Right, right, right.
If there's a big storm or anything, then you, and you, you immediately communicate with
Right.
agencies that you're, you know, supporting there.
Sure. So that wouldn't have to be anything that would have to be in this, because students wouldn't be here anyway.
Right.
What about at the district meeting? Students are here, that's a school day.
The district meeting, if there was no school during the day?
No, the, the school district meeting, that's a school day, that's not an in-service day.
Right.
So if there was, hopefully, it's far enough into March, there should not be snow, however.
That would be a decision of the moderator, and I would contact the moderator to find out if you still had a school district meeting or not.
Gotcha.
But it also doesn't start
Till the vote is
The voting doesn't start till two?
Yeah, so it's a different
But, no, I know what you mean.
Yeah. I just didn't know if that, those should be considered or not, and if not, great, but I wanted to bring it up. That's what I had.
We are working on a policy that's, that's going to be, that's addressing building access for other community, other community events.
I think that will cover most of what you
And that will probably
Oh, good. Oh, perfect.
That basically addresses superintendent's authority to permit people to use the school.
So that doesn't have to be in here. Great.
I do, I think that maybe it makes sense to modify third paragraph to include weather or other conditions.
Yeah.
So just or other in between weather and conditions?
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. We can maybe take a motion to approve the policy with that change?
So moved. Oh, second.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Thank you, Tammy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? abstained?
Thank you.
Next one is purchasing procedure. We put this one on for second reading again, because we were, we were waiting on, on getting a number, a dollar amount for what it would make sense to, to sort of exclude purchases from the competitive bidding and quotations process. So what Deb has suggested is $1,000.
It's pretty average.
Um, that seems, that makes sense. Does anyone have any questions about that, or why we're, why that number, that number? Okay. Any, I'd like to have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Thank you, Tammy.
I'll give you a second.
Thank you, Matt. Any further discussion?
Get the game.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Don't move on this side, isn't it?
Cares. So, one other thing, you know, that's sort of still in the works, there's, and Judy handed out the CPR news article about the Colorado school, we're still, we didn't actually have a chance to discuss it this evening, because we were, we spent a significant amount of a chance to discuss it this evening because we were, we spent a significant amount of time just trying to figure out where we were, but that's something that's still on the docket. I also received via email some additional information. If anyone would like to see that, I can forward it. I did forward it to the members of the committee. It was a, an article related to cell phone use and, and not specifically to schools. It was about a study that was conducted and, and related to people's distraction levels essentially from, from their phones even when they're not using them. So, if anyone's interested in that, I can forward that out. I also was able to locate the actual study that, that the article was about and it's quite interesting, so. I can-
Is that, is that the study that had whether it was in your bag or in the room or outside of your room and-
Yeah.
And the, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's pretty interesting.
It is interesting and there's some, I think the, I read the, the study, the whole study that was sort of the basis of the article and I think the article maybe oversimplifies it a little bit, but the premises-
Right.
Is there and it's very interesting. So, I can, again, I can forward that if anybody wants it. It's, it's good stuff to know when we're making decisions. But that's it from policy. Staff nominations, recommendations, resignations? And the Kinsman Scholarship Trust, I think it's a packet or a letter in the packet about that.
So, we had a gentleman approach the school, actually went through the guidance office because he wanted to give a sum of money, $15,000, to the school to be used for scholarships moving forward. And he has some specifications on, on the requirements for the, for getting the scholarship and all that. Typically, we don't hold the scholarship funds in our general fund. They're held in a trust fund. And we, the, you'll see the letter from the attorney just kind of outlining, we, we had a similar situation maybe five years ago. Another scholarship came and we, and you're supposed to put it into a trust fund. So it's a private trust fund, so it works a little bit differently than public trust funds. And the school board has the authority to be able to accept any of these unanticipated monies or private sourced money into a trust fund, a private scholarship fund at a regular meeting. And then, again, once, as with the other scholarship fund that we have, if, when they give out the scholarships at graduation and then it's time to pay the scholarship, typically like the following year, the student has made the requirements for the scholarship. You have a, it's a regular agenda item then to just authorize the payment of, from that private scholarship fund. So anyway, the attorney, we attached the letter, the attorney outlined how this works and then we attached the letter from the gentleman that, or the family that are, is giving the money for the scholarship, the $15,000. It's the Glover family. It's a Kinsman Scholarship Trust Fund and it outlines how they want it to be used moving forward. So the school board has the authority, authority to accept the funds at a regular meeting. And the attorney has some wording in that letter.
Are we supposed to accept it tonight?
Yeah. There's kind of some urgency. He, he wanted to make sure this was done. He's moving on in life and getting a little older, so he, he wanted to make sure the school received this.
So I'll make a motion to authorize the board to accept the fund, the expandable trust fund known as the Kinsman Memorial Scholarship Trust Fund by the generous donation of Anita, Matthew, Rachel, Jacqueline, Amanda, and Marissa Glover, as presented.
I'll second. Sorry.
That's okay.
Or Joe does.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Joe.
There you go.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Stained?
Could someone send a gracious thank you note to the family on behalf of the board?
We're trying to see if the family could come, you know.
Right.
I think someone in the, might be in the area. I don't know. Billy has been talking with them. I'm not sure they wanted to come, but yeah, we would definitely send that.
On behalf of the board, thank you very much.
District clerk appointments.
Yeah, according to Title 15, under the New Hampshire Revised Statutes, the Cooperative School District has to appoint annually a school, a district clerk and fix the salary. So every year prior to, this is the time where the district clerk is going to start working and, and setting the voting up and, and, you know, getting everything ready and candidates and whatever.
All that fun stuff.
So that's coming up and also you need to appoint somebody. We're recommending that you appoint Jeanette Peckdo.
Is Jeanette okay with that?
$250 salary.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you say $250? It's a Gavirich quick scheme, it looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll make that motion.
I'll second. I'll second. Thank you, Tammy and Jasmine. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you, Jeanette.
Carries. Yes, thank you, Jeanette. That sounds like a thankless gesture.
So much fun. Sure.
Working with Robert at the, that's his wonderful source.
He's fantastic. Yeah, I agree. He's fantastic.
Billing for solid waste disposal under new business.
Yeah, put that under new business, just to let you know that it's a new item that's in the budget and that was recommended by the town. And so we put $2,000 in the budget just so, you know, I didn't know, Tammy, if you had more information on that or-
Has it been implemented yet, Carrie?
We've talked about it. It, and for the towns, it is being tracked this year, but I do believe we will be billing any outside entities that haven't been billed previously, like the school, is going to come into effect immediately. Our next joint meeting is first week of January, so we'll know absolutely for sure then.
So what does that entail?
I think it's a good idea to have it in the budget because it will be-
But what does it entail though? I mean, are, are school, all school trash is a-
No, no, no. Anything that's, that's normally billed. When you bring a-
A computer or something like that.
A C and D, the construction and demolition, everything's going to be weighed now and charged out. The, the town entities, the different departments of the town will be tracked for the rest of the year to give us an idea of where we're at. But any outside of the two towns that fund it is going to be billed. So, so, yeah. And that will be set in stone, if you will, in January at our next meeting. So, it's a good idea to have it in the budget.
Although we didn't have, I can, we have the scale now, although that's new, did we still bill entities that came in and used that waste?
The school was not previously billed.
Right. But you mentioned like all entities also. Like, did we just not bill the schools? Is that what they did?
Correct. Correct. And there was a few others, like the, the medical center. If they brought stuff in, they normally weren't charged.
Right, okay.
That's going to change. The, the ambulance and et cetera.
Gotcha.
That'll all change now. So not like, obviously businesses were charged.
Right.
It's just the other nonprofits, if you will, that were kind of given some leeway.
Gotcha.
It's kind of switching, so.
Any other questions about that? Continuing business strategic plan, we talked a little bit about that, or you talked enough about that, you said?
Yeah, I know, so.
Jay, can I back up to the solid waste real quick?
You sure can.
I know we had some big objects that we were going to get rid of that were being auctioned off, very heavy objects. Did that stuff ever get auctioned off or do we have to get rid of it at the dump?
I don't think we auctioned off everything. I think the big heavy thing was not.
What was the big everything?
Yeah, right.
It's now scheduled to go tomorrow.
What was the big one? Was that a big generator?
The compressor. Three phase compressor.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think that went. I don't think anyone did.
That's metal. Don't pay to get rid of that. We'll take it for-
John Hamilton.
Exactly.
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, we have to-
No, seriously. Although metal's nothing right now, but-
We have to vote as a board what to do with it if it didn't go.
Oh, gotcha.
Well, yeah, didn't we, yeah, because it was, we voted to have the auction and then-
Then you have to decide where everything goes.
The auction. I think it was just, it was a good dispose.
Supposed to have determiners?
Yeah.
I mean, the price of metal right now is nothing.
Hardly worth the-
It's not. It's not worth the haul.
But the air conditioner part of it, that wind that, it's got, it has to be-
Oh, it has to be drained. Oh, that'll cost a pretty penny too.
That's why I was wondering where, whether it'd be a good thing to get rid of it now or if it could.
Maybe we can talk to Mark about disposing of anything before we start getting billed for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to, like you said, we have to vote on it or approve it anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve bringing that compressor to the solid waste facility if we could do it without being charged immediately. There's no second.
Yeah, Matt will second.
I don't think we have that approved. Can we do that?
If, I don't know. It's out of the policy. Can that be done? Yes?
The policy says these are the different ways you can dispose. You can sell, you can dispose.
Vote to dispose.
And then dump.
Right, if it's not bid on.
So if we can get rid of that thing without being charged, then I make a motion, we do so immediately.
Yeah.
And if there's a charge, we reassess at our next meeting.
I'll give you $50 for, for you to vote on.
Yeah.
Sold to the man crack. I make a motion, we sell the compressor to Mike Donnie for $50.
Well, if we're going to do that though, I think we have to open up the bids though.
Do we? Again?
I mean, no one bid on it.
Oh, no one, oh, we are not open.
Yeah, so we can dispose of it.
I was done when I was gone and I thought it'd be a lot more.
You got it.
So I made the motion, we give it to him for $50. Perfect.
I'll second. I'll second. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's yours. Thank you, Mike.
Motion carries.
Sweet. So glad you're here.
So, 2020, 2021 budget. Do we have anything else on that?
No, just your budget will start this next week at 6:30.
Do you have the budget backup with that column?
Oh.
Oh, the add-on.
Have a look at that before next week's meeting if you are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Deb, where do you find the time to do all this?
Oh, she's incredible. You didn't see that bed in the corner of her office? That's where she gets her hour of sleep every night.
You haven't seen her really efficient filing system in her office?
Looks like my daughter's bedroom.
It's so intimidating. Because I know that it, that it's, you know where everything is. I walk in, I just look at it, I'm like, oh.
Right.
Oh, great. Thank you. That's great. And there's some presentations next week in that budget session, right?
Right, you'll have a presentation from Trey.
Yeah.
And we're trying to get a presentation from the special ed director, just to give you guys an update on numbers and, you know, programming and whatnot.
So, sort of budget related, do we have a sense of like how much that project that we got a presentation on is going to cost? We have like any sense on that?
Not, I was going to try to meet with them before next week, so we can talk about it, meaning, but not since the initial numbers that we got from Wayne, which was what about three?
Three, seven. Three and some change. And that was, that was two years, I mean, that was two years.
We asked them for that. I think they got to go back to Wayne and get some numbers.
Yeah, okay. Great. Any other questions for continuing business?
Yeah.
And why?
Go ahead, Matt. You can go first. So I know our deadline for a new website launch has come and gone. I was just curious, where are we standing?
It is almost completed. We're just doing a few more, adding a few more things to it. I did talk with Dan Adams and he was, he was doing some work with it, so.
Okay.
He was saying by the 18th we'll be able to, maybe he can come and present as well as Trey.
I think, that's fine, but can we make that a drop dead? Like, we keep kicking this can and, and it needs to get done. You know, it was August, then it was October. That was just this year. Last year it was other stuff. And it's not personal. My frustrations aren't with the people. My frustrations are that we're continuing to allow this to go on and on and on when it took quite a bit of time to get approval, to get our systems updated and get a new website and it doesn't function. And I don't think we're, we're doing what, you know, we told the community we were going to do when we got this, all this new stuff. So, for me, if it's not done on the 18th, I'm going to make a motion. I'm just letting you guys know, I'm going to make a motion that we move forward to get a, get a private entity to take a look and see what the costs, or at least explore what the cost of that is. I know it's expensive. But we're also, if you take the cost of somebody's time, or how much time they're spending on that, outside of whatever their other duties might be, I mean, we're losing some cost internally as well on that, you know, trying to get that done when they could be working on other things.
I would also add to that, I don't, at least for myself, and, and obviously whatever the board wants is fine, but the last presentation, I don't think was, I don't think we need a presentation.
No.
The last presentation I felt was uncomfortable, just-
Okay, when Trey presents this time, it's going to be based, budget based.
That's different. Yeah, no, I know that.
Oh, okay.
But I'm just saying, I mean, it's done by the 18th or we're just going to move on and it's, and it's no, it's not any indication of how we feel about them or their work. It's just, we need to, we need to get this thing functioning. I agree. I think last year at this time, I think we actually voted to approve the money to do that, just because we were, as a board, supportive of the website and technology as a whole.
I just don't want them to have to, and I don't mean that in a rude way at all. I just don't want them to feel like they have to come in and like defend themselves and like, I just, that type of presentation, I don't think that we need.
Yes, sir.
What's the update on the sign? Just wondering.
Update on the-
The sign?
The sign. The school.
The sign. That, that is coming. They had one thing that they were, that Mark was waiting on.
Okay.
And, yeah, that, that should be-
I'm just excited.
Very soon. I am, I know.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
Yeah, the, I know as far as the brackets and stuff like that, he was, he was actually getting the, the shop kids to be working on those brackets and stuff.
Oh, very cool.
So they're, they're a little bit at stake in this as well, so, so they're excited. We're excited for that to happen.
Very cool.
I'm just happy that they can help out those kids, so.
Doing a good job.
That's great. I had a couple of things. The new kiln, did we check with the insurance company?
Yeah.
And everything's good to go?
Everything was fine. Yeah, everything was rated good.
Perfect. And I wasn't able to be there. Can anybody tell me how the event at McDonald's went?
Oh, yeah. So it went well. It went really well. There was a good turnout of the kids. There was a good representation of the material that kids were using, whether it was from math or to present, whether it was from math up to artwork and some readings.
Excellent.
And also some books that they had put together for, uh, the girls of summer. Thank you. So it was, it was pretty nice, well received.
Good.
The, the presentation of the funds to us is going to be on the 18th.
Oh, perfect.
The 18th and so-
At the next board meeting?
Pardon me?
Is it the next board meeting?
Two o'clock.
Yeah, but this will be at like 2:00.
Oh, okay.
And so, and so the Napoli group, Napoli group, sorry, the owners will be coming here to present us and we don't know exactly. It's a surprise. I don't know how much we earned.
Great.
But, but it was very well received. The family was very appreciative of us bringing some stuff there.
Excellent.
And it was, it was a really good endeavor.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. And Granite State Challenge, how'd we do? Never mind. I didn't ask. Forgot it.
We won't talk about that. No, I mean, the kids, the kids did an excellent job going down the tri- I ended up seeing some of the, the questions and stuff that- Hey, you got to be proud of them even for being-
For getting there. Absolutely.
The questions they were asking them were-
Yeah.
Very obscure and difficult. If they knew, heck, if they would've got like 10% of those, I would've been really impressed. So I don't know their overall score, but they went down the tri, they competed, they did the best they can, so that's, that's what matters.
Excellent. Yeah, definitely.
Absolutely.
Is that manual things?
Is the what?
The manual, yeah.
We did pretty good at the trivia challenge though.
I'd like to point out we took third place without purchasing mulligans.
I didn't, I just think it was.
Oh, gosh, I went broke purchasing mulligans.
Any other continuing business?
That was all hit.
Okay. I don't see any students, staff?
Yeah, two things. From Anique Alvarde, you're invited to the Bazaar Bazaar from 9:00 to 10:30 on Friday, the 13th, in the elementary multipurpose room. Fourth grader seven crafting like crazy and hopes to raise $500 to purchase a heifer for a family in need. From Heather Krill and Jen Witcher, this year's poetry at loud classroom competition is tomorrow. And also congratulations to Kai Good for being selected as Rotary Speech Champion and she will move on to the next round this winter. Kai, Dimitri Spanos, Berta Robinson, and Silas Reden all gave remarkable presentations at last week's Rotary Meeting. Thank you to students for taking positive academic risks. From Dory Reden, ELO News, Littleton Regional Hospital has joined the ELO community. Students will be able to partake in a nursing internship at the hospital. We're currently working with the hospital to start incorporating other departments at Littleton Regional to support the ELO program in the future. And from Barbara Ho, two weeks ago, Jade Fitzgerald auditioned for the All-State Chorus and was accepted once again.
Awesome.
The audition requires months of preparation, and only a handful of students from the North Country were accepted. I believe she's the only Linwood student ever to make it into All-State for all four years.
Wow.
And also there are volunteers from the middle and high school chorus caroling tonight over at Woodstock's Winter Festival.
Very cool.
Thank you very much. Mike?
Yesterday, I would see it tonight to hear that presentation, and I just wanted to talk to you about it, and not in a negative way either. You know, I, as you know, I had a lot of history on this, trying to get this going years ago, and we looked at everything, biomass, and we talked to a lot of people, and one thing that keeps sticking out to me, and tonight he opened his presentation and noted that the, the oil tank's out of compliance, and that's what's driving this project. That isn't what's driving this project. That oil tank isn't out of compliance, okay? It's just the lines from the tank to the building. Because like I said, I've been trying to get something going for years with this thing, and I, and I see the value in, you could eventually do something. You know, and like I said, if you've got an administrative order consent right now that you're under, which you're a year and a half out of being in compliance with that, you were supposed to respond by, I think, July of two thousand eighteen, hasn't been done, you're, you're subject to a thousand dollars a month filing on that. And, you know, that needs to get up to speed, but we paid Wayne once before to do a, to do a study for us, and whatever that was, five, six thousand dollars. And then tonight they come in, whatever you paid for this study, and the option that he's throwing out to you wasn't even in his first presentation. He's talking about dual fuel burners now. If you look at the report, I think it was February eighteenth, that wasn't even an option that he was, was throwing out here to you. As far as all the controls happened to build in, everybody that's come to us, Johnson Controls, the wood energy count, everybody that's been here, those are options or suggestions they made to us, so that, you know, everybody's in line with that. That's good. I just want to caution you to take your time to educate yourself before you try to push this through the budget this year, because it isn't an emergency, you know, that you have to throw up the budget this year. You can even do components of it, you know, so I am saying that if you're not familiar with it, that, you know, it's, that you're not familiar with it and it's tough, but just try to educate yourselves before you push it to the next level and try to push it through a bond or something, and you know, it's going to be a lot of money, it's going to, you know, you asked Matt about the cost of it. There's a lot more components in what he presented tonight than what he had in that three hundred thousand dollar. He didn't have any controls in the first one. He had just some controls, you know, so it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a lot of money. And I just don't want you to feel like you've got to get this pushed off to the Budget Committee and off to the voters this year. It isn't like you're going to run out of heat next year. I mean, you're out of compliance, and that can be handled just with some simple paperwork probably, they'll give you, you know, the pre-forgiven and, I mean.
I think we have a, I think we got a continuous, didn't we? Yeah.
Yeah, you didn't until, I got it right here, if you want to see it. I mean, I, I've worked with these guys for thirty years, I know people now.
I think we have another, I think we've got another one since, though, too.
It must've been after one o'clock today. The last time they had any correspondence from the S A U was October eighteenth of eighteen, and that was a home conversation. We were supposed to turn in everything to get an extension, and you didn't do it. That was nothing, Mark, where you didn't follow up. I mean, you can call it, it's all public information, it didn't like, you know.
I don't doubt you did research, I'm just telling you, that's what they're telling me here.
Well, it isn't. I mean, I got heard here, and it was July, June first of the eighteenth. If we did not do the biomass, we should start responding for it. Didn't happen. I, you know, that's, you know, so don't feel like you've got to do this because of that, because it'll give you an extension, and that's all the wonderful work down there, you know, but, you know, so don't feel like you've got to pass it on to the voters and do it, you know, just hopefully, you'll, maybe the Facilities Committee will take it or somebody can, because I'm sure there's going to be some people when it gets to that point to spend half a million dollars that don't educate themselves and question about it, and when you try to sell it to them, because you say the tank, because that's happened, and I've pointed this out multiple times already, it isn't the tank, you know, and, and I'm a supporter of it. I mean, you remember that, like, you know, you know, yes, I'm all for it, but I just want you to be cautious, you know, I hate to see a half a million dollar mistake or part of that. I mean, probably Joe's more familiar than anybody and understands that.
Yeah, I'm a little taken back by the, they thought we had a left to cut water in here that we could shut it down in June. I mean, something like that, but this building does need the controls and everything eventually taken care of. Like you said, could it be done in segments? Of course.
That could be segmented, I mean, the controls could be done now. The dual burner idea, it's a good idea, I mean, and if you buy and take aim, you can buy for under a buck a gallon right now if you negotiate, you know, you know, fuel nuts and.
I'm all for that, yeah.
The first report that Wayne had, he was strictly propane, which, you know, is great issue, yet, but next year may not be. I mean, historically, propane is your highest fuel to buy, so the dual, but that was never even his first report, that he'd be back in eighteen. So, you know, it looks good when you're looking at, you hear these reports, but I'm just saying, you know, try to educate yourselves about it. And, you know, don't be a big hurry to sell it to the community, I guess, that you learn about it.
But do we even have a final product yet anywhere?
Well, that's my, but what you presented tonight, I don't know if you paid for that, but have those construction documents and plans, or is this just an idea? What is this that you presented?
I can give you a little bit of background, because this has been going on for, as you know, quite a while.
Quite a while.
Wayne Fillion was paid to do a study. Wayne Fillion came up with a number of different options for both buildings. We went through what I will characterize as rigmarole with Johnson Controls over an energy service contract, which they just sort of walked away from after about a year of jerking us around. After that, we went back to the report that Wayne had filed, and as far as I know, dual fuel's been on the, on the docket ever since I've been involved in it, because that's all I've ever seen.
I have a deep team report to be in now.
Well.
It's been in some, because we talked about it for a while.
Johnson's had it in theirs.
We, we had a, a, a meeting last year where, after, so Johnson Controls pulled out of, of the energy service contract, and we had no other people interested in doing that, we went back to the original, the original options for fixing the issues that we had. Those options were, there was basically only one viable option. We then were about to vote to approve money for the engineering for that option. Because of feedback from the community, and I think it might've been from you, Mike, we then asked Wayne to then do another study about consolidating a plant for both buildings, which he came back to us after that, to saying that that was not feasible, that was not a financially viable option, it would, the, the payback on that would never work in the way that it would be a lot more cost effective to do it individually. So we went back to that option, I don't know how long it was ago, maybe six or eight months ago. We approved the money specifically for engineering of the option that we selected as the only